Thank you everyone.
All right, so we have a public input and we have people here tonight. This is exciting. So everybody gets 10 minutes. So go ahead. You want to start? So we have a public input and we have people here tonight. This is exciting. So everybody gets 10 minutes. So go ahead. You want to start?
Go ahead. I'll go first.
Oh, like actually, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, you prepare to save it, right? I'm joking with you. Again, anybody is welcome to speak. No, our public input is right now.
I am here on behalf of the pickleball community. Today, we have 82 people sign up in our organized games and lessons and stuff. Since we last chatted at the big meeting, I've got myself certified as an instructor and I've been giving lessons. So our community is growing and we're getting better. There are people on that group that do not play Babel because of the courts. And I'm excited, very, very excited to see them on today's agenda and I really hope they pass because they are good.
Great. Excellent. Excellent. Anybody else?
I think fixing the courts will also be
I'm sorry, and I should have named an address. I'm sorry for the record.
Hannah Patton. I think fixing and repairing the tennis courts would be really good for the town because everybody uses it. However, I think it would be really beneficial for our high school tennis team. We had a really good season this year and I have a feeling we're just going to keep getting better. And it's not all that great to have not good courts representing a really good team. So I think that will be beneficial for everyone.
Excellent. What grade are you in?
I'm a I'm a 10th grade.
You didn't know I was going to answer the question. I get it.
I'm going into
Excellent. Excellent. Well, thank you for coming. Anybody else? Paula, you play pickleball, don't you?
No.
No, okay, great. All right. Well, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, all right? And we do have it on our agenda. There is no other public input as we go through our agenda and that's your time now to speak, but we do appreciate you guys coming out. All right, next thing on our agenda is we have minute meetings from May 14th. Is anybody, you were not here, Bob, right? You were Wally World or where were you somewhere?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting from our regular scheduled meeting on May 14, 2024.
Excellent. Dee or Cynthia, were you at that meeting, each of you?
I was not there, so I'll stay there.
You were there. Excellent. Would you like to second John's motion?
I'll second.
From France?
From France. Hey, big red wave here. Big red wave. We'll talk about that later.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion on the minutes from May 14th? Let's get a vote here. Saying aye, aren't I?
Aye.
And we have two absences, right, Bob and Dee? Okay. Thank you. All right, so the next thing is Paula, consideration for tax, uncollected taxes. Paula, you have something you'd like to add for that?
My suspenseless, I'm sorry it's so high.
Wow.
This is the 2020 grand list, which was collectible as of July 2021, which was right after COVID. And obviously, as you can see, they were able to not want to pay their bills. But we are looking into doing UCC liens on personal property going forward. Actually, I'm going to be doing leaning the UCC liens for the 2022 grand list, which is just ending. But I have to get it in before the end of September to be able to file these liens. So, and then we'll see what that generates.
Okay. So everybody have any questions for Paula?
I do. Before our motion. So the percentage of real estate and personal property, how do you break up to 238?
The the real estate is not suspendable.
This is all personal property.
This is
This is all personal property, commercial or per person?
If you look through the personal property amount is 101,000. Then the motor vehicle, the regular motor vehicle list was 110. The supplemental is at 26. And that's how it breaks it down.
And you said that you regret that it's so high. Is it grossly higher than last year?
Absolutely.
By how, by?
I believe last year was around 89,000, if I recall correctly. It wasn't even nearly as
So around the water cooler, what does the tax collector's office contribute? Just interest rates and?
COVID and, you know, lack of people wanting to pay their bills or having
Well, I think everybody probably wants to pay their bills sometimes.
You're talking, you know, who knows if these people have passed away like that.
Moved out.
Well, to go from 80 to 230 to 240 is
It's very high.
I'm not sure as chairman, where does this question go? Where does this money come from? It just comes out of the balance fund, right? I mean,
It's still collectible.
It's still collectible, but she needs to do this to start something else.
This goes to a collection agency once it's approved.
But the number, but if 80 was collectible, now we're at 238. So there's a number that's not collectible that's going to come out of
Come back, yes.
To that point, Paula, to John's point, what's the historic recovery rate? What has it been when you send it to the collection agency?
15% they get.
No, no, what do
How much do we get?
How much do we get back? We should be able to get most of this, I have to say. I don't have the actual numbers. I can get those to you.
That was my recollection. The collection agency
They have other avenues to get in the addresses, to finding whether they're dead or alive, to, you know, we don't Our office, we have to go off the DMV list and, you know, your Google search for people, which isn't always correct.
And time consuming.
Yeah, well, I mean, I have two, three clerks, well, two clerks and assistants, but we are busy doing other things in that office, trying to get things together.
So is any of these cars still registered in Babel? Like, they still here?
Um, I, as far as being registered in Babel, possibly. But again, they can't get their registration done until taxes are paid.
Okay.
So the ask here is just to make a motion to transfer it to a suspension list?
Correct.
Dee, Cynthia, you have any questions? I know Cynthia, you've been waiting all night for this. Come on.
Yeah, I had to meet her.
Okay. Hold on Cynthia, you're muted.
She asked me herself.
Cynthia, unmute yourself, okay? We have some feedback from yours. Unmute yourself.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm wondering, do you really have a water cooler? That's really my question.
And who pays for the water, right?
And I want to know, yeah. I'm just kidding. Bob's not a queer.
All right. Dee, anything?
I addressed my cat knocking things off of my shelf. Sorry about that. But I was just wondering, is is this possibly attributable to more, like, larger homes being abandoned? Do we have any sort of?
Real estate involved in this. The real estate are not suspendable.
Okay, so 238,000 is?
Personal property, business, motor vehicles, that's it.
So is it more expensive cars that are not being paid? Or like, is there any sense of that? I'm just wondering, like,
A lot of people honestly wait until the three, three years is up to register their new car. So if the taxes are high, they'll put it off till they make one big payment in three years.
Okay. And you need this to do the next move, basically.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion. We approve the amount of 238,825,008 cents to be transferred to a suspension list.
I will second that. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second and a discussion. Cynthia?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was voting.
Oh, you're already, you're ahead of it. You're ahead. You're ahead of us. Okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Say aye.
Okay.
Aye.
The record show unanimous. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So consideration of a tax collector credit write-off amount. Paula, what is this?
So this is money that people did not ask for refunds back. And or we could get a hold of to get back to you. Again, if you look through this list, it's very little pennies for the most part. That they didn't have another tax due the next year, so nothing I could transfer. So this money comes back to the town, to the general fund.
That's a little larger.
Yeah.
I'm trying.
Going to be 77?
Can we clip them? Can we?
Be nice, right?
All right. Bob, you want to make a motion or?
I'd make a motion to accept the tax collector's credit write-off in the amount of $7,588.30 as requested.
I will second Bob's motion.
We have a second. Any other discussion on that? Bob's motion? Let's take a vote. Saying aye?
Aye.
All right. All right, I understand that there's a tennis court there. I make a motion that we put this on next month's meeting. Just get more people here. All right, again, we have 13,500 for a lease buyout. So you know about this?
Yes. So it's a 2021 Chevrolet Equinox. The requested amount that we're asking for is 95. But the court came in as 92, requesting for a little bit more because there's always fees involved. And just on a side note, we had reduced the budget for building inspection by $3,353. We took that out of the budget. And so right now, the vehicle is four years old. It has 9,170 miles on it. And it's the last of the town that needs to be
There's no other lease deals.
And what was the recommendation for it to come out of the CNR account?
Yes, if it could come out of the CNR.
We talked about this during budget season. We knew this was coming.
Yeah, this was
I'd like to make, oh, I'm sorry. Is your, you're okay?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we spend the amount of 19,500 for coming out of the CNR account to purchase the lease buyout for the building inspected vehicle.
Second thing. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is any other discussion about the lease buyout? Try everybody's mind. Everybody, yes? Okay, let the record show you now. So this is going to be a tough one. I don't want to disappoint you. Anyway, the next thing on our agenda is for the, I'm sorry, to repair the rest of the money. The board of selectmen had put, I believe, 225, 225, and the balance to us would be 253, 941, 22. And this is to finally fix the tennis slash pickleball courts. Rachel, can you talk about the bids and the process and how we got here?
We got, we had three bids. One was very, was realistic, was 478, 941, 22. The closest bid was in the 650s and the next closest bid was 850. The two lowest bids are, you know, we're reclaiming the asphalt. The highest bid that was in the eights was the post-enchanted concrete, which obviously had a longer life, the 20-year lifespan, but significantly more. So we picked a company, this company is the company that did our lobby. They recently did the Southbury tennis courts with the high school. So they've done it before, you know, we're reclaiming what is there, but it's nuts to bolts, new fencing, all that great stuff. Three of the tennis courts will stay pure tennis. And three of the tennis courts will get lined double courts for pickleball. So we'll end up with six pickleball courts. And six tennis courts, which are already there, three specifically for tennis.
With no striping for?
No striping. Like, Brookfield just did theirs and they did all of their courts with two pickleball courts on each, but they only have four courts under our school.
Yes, I was struggling to follow the numbers. So six courts in
So on one, totals of six courts, three of the courts, you're able to put two pickleball courts, one on each side of a court.
Small.
On a tennis court because they're smaller.
That's how you got six.
Correct.
And you had said that they did the lobby, but we don't have a pickleball court in the lobby, right? So, so what did they do? Or you hired a construction company?
Gordian is the company that bid out for the lobby when we redid the GP work.
So they would do bathrooms?
They're kind of everything.
So they're contractors? They're not specializing in tennis courts?
No, but they've done a lot of tennis courts around. Yeah, like I said, they did Southbury. And I met with them up there about a different project at the schools last week and he had mentioned a couple of other courts they'd already done and pickleball, pickleball, just normal pickleball courts, but tennis courts. They redid the Southbury tennis courts.
I was just under impression that there were specific companies doing this work. It's a very special, but this company will do a bathroom or a pickleball. That seems like a pretty big range.
They're, what else they do, I don't know, but it's quite a large company that specializes, like, they, they're also, I'm getting close to them about changing out the drainage for one of my ball fields that is having an issue.
And that doesn't concern you? I mean,
All encompassing.
That doesn't concern you not having a specialty company spending a half million dollars?
No, because Southbury got great reviews and they've done other courts in the area. They've done other courts, like I put out sort of like a questionnaire to other parks and rags and they've done other courts in the area. You know, RNS, one of the other companies, some just don't get back to you. Hindy got back to me, but Hindy was $680,000 to do the courts.
We don't normally go back to the, but we have a junior here.
I'm so sorry. The pond broad courts are very nice. I played there twice this year. They did a lovely job on those.
So it's a construction company and this is in their realm, basically. And not to go into the nuts and bolts, but it's all new fencing. They can't save any of the fencing. And isn't that like $70,000 for the fence?
Yeah, it's about 70 grand for the fence. I think it's more of, we had discussed it with them, they, they wouldn't have certified it using old fence. So, and honestly, I, if you're going to do it right, I'd like to do it right and have new and have it be all look good versus, you know, painting something that's rusted onto a brand new piece of court. I think it's, when they do it right, it's going to look amazing and it's, you know, five, six years past due. And I think they're reasonably priced and they stand by their work, I think, too.
Again, they're reclaiming it, using the material.
Correct.
Compacting it and then they're coming in with two layers of asphalt and then they do epoxy and blah, 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 right?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Not yet. We're, we're, we're in the middle of our presentation.
Presentation phase. Okay, fair, fair enough.
Does anybody have any questions? Or Cynthia, would you like to make a motion or do you have a question?
I have a question. I don't know if this came up at any selectman meetings, but I had a conversation with the first selectman. And he said that he is going to incorporate, or his idea was to incorporate the highway department in part of this process. And I didn't know if that had been discussed with
It's a different
Different project, Cynthia, not this
Oh, I thought it was pickleball.
But that's a different, that's a different area, not the tennis courts.
Cynthia, they're thinking about adding some other overflow courts down near Johnson, I believe, down near the skate park. And there's some paving going to go on down there and they thought they can make something down there.
But nothing's in stone at all, even remotely.
Okay. I mean,
Nothing, somewhere yet.
Yeah, Cynthia, thanks. It sounds like there's another ask coming.
Their allure, the allure of pickleball eludes me, but, you know.
Can you, you can, for the audience, we're going to turn, people glaring.
I am a recent convert to pickleball.
Oh, no, oh, no.
You're going to excuse yourself in a vote, right?
You need to recuse yourself, Bob.
And it is a very popular sport that I think runs the fire age range from, I've seen little, you know, very young
Obviously, old.
To very old. And it's, so I, if we're at that stage, I'm perfectly comfortable making the motion.
I'd be glad to hear a motion from you.
Probably the most likely between Nick and I, is to play pickleball.
They may make a trophy or statue up here.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the board of selectmen recommendation to use $253,941.22 from the capital not recurring account to finance the balance of the 478,941.22 to replace the tennis courts behind the high school. I don't think that that's behind the high school. I'm sold. And I do remember when there were courts back
Yes, I do, too. In our school complex, right?
Are we getting all of that for the minutes of his motion?
Yeah, she's going to go back to the tape.
I'll second your motion.
Is there any other questions or discussions? Cynthia, are you ready to vote or you have another question?
Well, I just, I really want to know what the origin of the pickle is in the ball. Like, why do they even call it pickleball? Somebody can answer that question. It will affect my vote.
It was named after the dog. It was the original
Pickles the dog?
When it was originally made up, the game, the guy had a dog named Pickle.
Like in the 18th century or is it pretty recent?
It was the 70s.
Cynthia, I would think that would be attractive to you, being that
Well, the 70s, that was my decade, so. Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll try everybody's mind. Everybody in favor, please, saying aye? Aye, aye, probably going to get the vote. Let, let the record show it unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for coming to the town meeting. Thank you for coming here to the selectman's meeting. It means a lot when people come out to the meetings. All right, you can come by without asking for something. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, this is what I've been waiting all my
It was so great to see you next.
It was great to see you. Has anybody sprayed the weeds on Freeman Avenue yet?
Do you do that? I heard you guys
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Host notified ever sources who work in town on Saturday night, so I was probably writing emails.
All right, we're still recording. Debbie, can we have your report, please?
All right, in Brad's absence, I'm going to present the controller's report. On the revenue side, miscellaneous state revenue, we budgeted 282,000. We received 1,065,000. The 282 that we budgeted, I just received that last week. I already booked it, but it's not reflected in this number. It's going to show up on the next month's report. For parking wrecks, charges for services parking wrecks, we exceeded the adjusted budget number of 940,000. As of May 34th, we are at 1,006,000. So it's over by 66,000, which is good.
Excellent, yeah.
Use of money and property interest. We collected 1,750,000 in interest so far versus the adjusted budget of 579. And this is the line item where we had increased parking wrecks budget. It was originally 450,000. We added 129 to it. We're also looking at probably 150,000 coming in for June. And that's the reason because Boulder Ben just did the balloon payment, which is like $4 million. So give or take, we may get another 150 in interest. And lastly, I want to touch on the general tax revenue. As of the end of May, we collected more in tax than we budgeted. We exceeded the collected, the collection number by 100,000.
That's greatness.
That's the positives. I'm going to move on to the expenses. All right, and there should be no surprise because Brad has been talking about it for quite some time. Our utilities account, our projection through June 30th is showing that it will be over by $267,000. Our legal fees as well, it's going to be over by 100,000. We are still currently behind on our current town council, three months. And our former town council, we're still behind on a few of the invoices. He hasn't yet submitted those. So we'll be, we're projecting, our projection is going to be 100,000. Those are the two negatives that I have and I have a few positives. Employee benefits, hospitalization, we projected that we're going to come under by 250,000. That hit of vacancies and the percentage of employed premium contribution has increased. So we're getting some savings out of that. So altogether, it should come in under 250. Salaries is another one that's going to come in. We projected savings of 150,000 in the salary line. And that's due to vacancies as well. And I also have an update on sand and soil. We'll come in under by 50,000. On the sand and the soil.
60,000? Is it, is it stuff full now? It seemed like it should have been more than that, but we're okay as long as it's fall, fall, I mean.
We have two POs currently that we're going to stack up on some for next year. So the balance should be 50,000, projection. If there's more than we'll address them.
Okay.
Any questions on the report?
No, it's some good news, obviously. And isn't there a million dollars from some grants and stuff that we got also coming from the motor vehicle? Brad keeps talking about the million dollars.
Of extra money that's going to come into that account. So you don't know?
No, I'm not sure.
There's some money we got from the state we weren't supposed to get, but
We are expecting more relative than we expected originally.
But a good number.
A good number. Like, we're, we're really not in bad shape right now. I shouldn't say that way. We're in good shape.
Yeah, no, I mean, we were talking about
If you're not in bad shape.
No, we've, you know, Brad and I have really, this year especially, we've done our quarterly meetings with every department head, like, we've stayed on top of everything that we can do. And of course, utilities are just a gamble to some degree. We recently locked into a better deal long term, so a little more you know,
More security, yeah.
Yeah, we know what's coming. Legal fees are an issue. We've got a lot going on. We still haven't gotten all of the former attorney stuff. And our new attorney taking over has been involved in a lot of things. And it's going to be a little more this year because she's working to kind of figure out the processes. And then at that point, we can kind of scale her back, but yeah.
But we have some extras that we can make up a difference.
I have a question for the first level of the time. So the quarterly meetings, that sounded like a wonderful idea and the PO, anything? So the quarterly meetings, that sounds like a wonderful idea, and the P O, anything over twenty five hundred dollars. But in your opinion, what's it, did, did meeting with the department heads quarterly kick expenses down the road, or how, I mean, it didn't state money, did it? It just gave you a clearer picture?
I think it was a clear picture that we didn't see anything coming that was an issue. I mean, there were times along the way where they're probably more in tune with their budgets as well. Remember, because last year, that, you know, a couple of them just kind of got out of whack, but I think what it's done is it's, it's helped us stay on track. I don't think it's kicked anything down the road. I don't think people are not spending where they're supposed to. It just meant basically been more transparent.
Almost a reminder that, hey, stay in your lane. I mean, you know, kind of, right?
It certainly, it certainly helped me a lot.
Sure enough, to, to, to watch it, right, every three months. Dee or Cynthia, do you have anything for Sebby?
I'm good, thank you, Sebby.
Excellent. Someone wanna make a motion on Sebby's first comptroller report?
I'll make a motion to accept the comptroller's report as
Excellent.
A little second as well.
Okay, any other discussions about Sebby's comptroller report? Try everybody's mind, saying aye?
Aye. Sebby, thank you. I appreciate it.
Was that unanimous, or?
It was unanimous, yeah, yeah. Brad's gonna call me and I'm gonna
I just want the record to show.
You know, in, in Brad's absence this week, Sebby stood a terrific job, so we can have that on the record.
Right, well, that's where I was, oh, Brad was very nervous about this outcome. Excellent, okay. I would accept the motion to adjourn at the end of her. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for signing on, everyone. All right, thank you for coming out.
Sure.